It's six thirty, so welcome to the regular city council meeting for the city of Starbuck on April twelfth. And we'll start off with a pledge of allegiance. If you'd call the roll, please, Joan.
Mayor Swenson.
Here.
Council Porter.
Here.
Council Tate.
Here.
Council Buckle.
Council Hanson.
Here.
Okay, the first item on the is the consent agenda. And I'd just like to add that due to an unexpected resignation on our police force, we're gonna have a short closed session at the end of the meeting to discuss personnel contract, police contract. And other than that, is there any discussion or changes to the agenda? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Pose, same sign. Motion carried. The first item on the agenda is Pope County HRA EDA. And they have a proposal for housing in the, in Starbuck. And the, they gave a presentation to planning and zoning last Monday, or last Tuesday, I guess. And the planning and zoning committee recommended that the council consider the proposal. So I will turn it over to the Pope County HRA, so.
I just want to speak for two minutes and thank the city council. All you have done is work with the Pope County HRA EDA. You might say that Starbuck is a starbuck county in terms of working with those things. It's very important. Housing is essential.
Is that, is that mic on?
Oh, I don't know.
There's a green light on here?
Yeah, the green light is on, I can have to be close to it.
Okay.
So I was just thanking the city council for their support and the community. And I know people have disagreements in every community in this, in this county. That's true all over the world. And so sometimes we have to set those things aside and do what we think is best for the commit, bit of the whole. Over a decade ago, Lori and I and Larry Kittleson and a half a dozen other people worked with the county and cities in the county to develop a countywide HRA EDA. And during that time, we've come to realize that economic development, housing development must be first because you don't, can't have economic development without people. You've got to have people in your community to buy services and support the community. And so I just wanted to say that in advance and also in so much to Lori, who's the main speaker.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council people. I am here on behalf of the Pope County HRA to present a cooperative working situation to have townhomes built on our property that is located on the airport road. We have previously worked with Mr. Cody Nelson from SOX Center on two projects now, one in Vallard and one in Cyrus. That will be completed hopefully by May. And he has approached us and would like to continue working with us and develop Pope County for a place for him to do townhomes for people to stay in. We've been very pleased, we've had no problems working with Cody. We love his floor plans and he has people that already want to rent before he's stuck a shovel in the ground. So, and I, and I believe, and he probably can tell you that he has a list of callers already for Starbuck. A few years ago, the Pope County HRA did a housing study for the whole county of, for, for everyone that lived here. And we were desperately lacking places to rent, places for people to stay. So we thought when Cody said that he's up and ready to do something in Starbuck, and because we have had no commercial, our plans were to have possibly a hotel because we felt that before COVID, we thought it was nice to have more places for people to come and visit our beautiful lake and our beautiful city. Sad to say with COVID, the hospitality industry is on the back burner and it's gonna take many years for it to come back. So Cody presented these townhomes on the piece of land that we have. And I think he has plans for ten to twelve that can fit on there. He will do them in phases and he will start towards the airport on the west side of our property. We have also asked him to let us keep for three years the frontage to the lake so that we may do possibly some searching for commercial businesses to have on, on the highway. If we cannot find those people within three years, then Cody has the option to continue and put two more townhomes on that piece of property, which is about a half an acre that we would be keeping. So he has agreed to that, he believes that he wants to do what's best for Starbuck. So what I'm here for is asking that you ha, would have a special meeting so that we could work with Cody to get his project going. It's a very tight timeline as you can see on, on the papers, the scheduled events that were sent to you. So I'm asking that you would vote today to have a resolution setting date for May, May tenth for a TIF district to get the project going. Cody, would you like to say anything?
I have just a little binder here of what I have to offer. What I have offered in other towns, I'm Cody Nelson, I've worked with CS Nelson Properties. Like Lori said, I, I put together twin homes, a three bedroom, two bathroom, two bedroom, one bathroom scenario. The property there is set up really nicely for the way that I see you guys have your paperwork there laid out for twin homes set adjacent to the RV park and adjacent to Bay Meadows. Driveways entering off of Airport Road. And Lori was absolutely correct, I have a tremendous list of people that have been calling, showing up to other properties that I have so that they could get a, a real feel for what I have to offer. The Starbuck, Glenwood, Cyrus areas are really, it's a hotspot. I think COVID has brought a lot of light to the ability to, to distance work. And I think a lot of people are fleeing from the cities, coming this direction. And I, I say that because I get phone calls every day from St. Cloud, Wilmer, Spicer, Richmond area that's looking to move a little farther to the north, so. I would like to be able to build ten or twelve on there like I have laid out. I got side setbacks on there, interior setbacks and such. It's gonna be probably a three or a four phase project depending on what the EDA and the, you know, the city council would like to see from it. I met with my excavators contractors out there, figured out for water displacement, for city sewer and water, hydrants gonna go, manholes and such like that, so. I guess that would open up for any discussion from council or public if they had some questions for me.
Cody, do you have the building materials to complete the project or?
Yeah, one would be concerned about that with the way the building price is. So what I did thankfully to my contractor slash lumberyard, I about five months ago now paid for all three buildings up front and have exterior interior walls, trusses on the ground and they're already all prefabbed and realistically ready to hit some concrete as soon as I can get that poured and the infrastructure underground put together, so. Yes, I do, I can fulfill all of that. Have appliances already, already, already ordered such as that's a six to eight months wait period as well, so. Everything is in line for the project to be tentatively completed in the month of August. For, for certainly the first two twin homes, if not all three, so. And I know that I've gotten some phone calls and I know there's some people in the crowd that would like to move into these units and that's kind of what I told them for move-in dates would be around that August, August fifteenth range, so.
Besides Pope County, where, where else have you?
Um, I did a project in Stearns County, which is right on the border of Pope, that's in Bruton. Did that about six months ago. I've been down in Candy Ojai, which is in New London. I believe some of you went and looked at that project of mine. I've worked in Todd County up in Long Prairie. And then I've been associated with other projects when I was getting, building my wings, as I wanna call it, up in Cass County, up in Pillager area, Otter Tail County. So I've really been abroad across all the counties, so. The EDA and HRA of Pope County has been really easy to work with, so. It's been a good transition to kind of come into Pope County and fulfill these smaller towns because the need in these small towns is unbelievable, so. And it's actually a really, really good shakeup of, we'll say, Starbuck. If this all comes to fruition in Starbuck, because now I offer twelve residents, new homes that are looking to downsize. My guess is eighty percent, if not more, would come from the city of Starbuck. And then they offer a four bedroom, five bedroom home for people trying to move up with families and such. So it really shakes up the, the real estate market as well. And I wanna touch on one thing that I'm sure has been a concern of people here in the TIF district, which is the definition is tax increment financing, which in the description of that, it states that it is a low income qualification. It is not a subsidized qualification, it is a market rate, rent rate. It's going to look just like, if not nicer than the Bay Meadows, which is right adjacent to this property. Rents are expensive, the places do cost a lot of money to be built and I take care of them. I do all my own maintenance in the summertime, I'm there once a week mowing, checking with the tenants, making sure everything is good to go, so. If I have eighty-five tenants, which is approximately what I have right now, I would say that over seventy-five percent are the age of fifty plus and about eighty percent of them qualify for low income housing. Because they're retired, they don't have any income besides their retirement platform and that's, that qualifies for low income, so. I just wanted to clear that air that this is not a subsidized housing district. This is a low income qualification of twenty-five percent, which means one out of every four doors is, needs to be qualified for low income qualifications, so. Is there anybody else that has any questions? Yeah. I do. So I use Elrosa lumber. I work with them on every project on the account of how much product flow that I have. So they understand what I need, when I need it and how I need it. When you speak of like a local contractor, I do not have anybody from Starbuck, but I, I have Marx Electric, which is right close to Alexandria. I work with a plumbing and heating company, he's based out of Little Falls. Pretty much the way that I have my puzzle piece put together, it's the same group all the time, just on the account of, they typically don't have to call me. They, they know the answer before I gotta give it. So speaking to local plumbers, electricians, contractors, I pretty much have my own wheelhouse of that already and they are, you know, they're not from the cities. They're in the local SOX Center area-ish within, you know, forty-five minutes, so. Does that answer your question? Well, in, in respect to that, and I understand that it would be nice to be able to, you know, hire local guys. We'll just theoretically state that, okay, I come to Starbuck and, you know, this all comes to, and then I start looking for contractors, plumbers, electricians. As we all know, the building industry is extremely booming right now. Even if I ordered lumber, I couldn't get it. I couldn't get an entire house, two by sixes, two by fours, OSB. I couldn't get it and it would not be cost efficient because OSB's in the fifty dollar plus range right now. And, you know, I had to purchase it five months ago. I purchased all of my heating and air, all of my appliances over five months ago because all of the pieces and parts that come, they come from China unfortunately, so. I would like to try to work with local contractors, but the way that my platform is, is very difficult to try to line that up appropriately. What's that? Because right now I have a property in Bruton that I could go to and fall back on. There's other opportunities in other towns, you know, that I, that I build on. So the way my platform works is I try to build three duplexes in the spring and I put three foundations in the, in the fall for winter work for my guys. So I was working with the city of Brandon and the way that it worked, I had three buildings and the piece of property that I was working with, it just couldn't, it couldn't fit it with a particular bylaw for driveway distances, so. That's when I approached Lori and the EDA and we started this process, so. Is there any other questions?
Does anybody have any questions out there that they'd like to ask? David Johns?
I'll, I'll, I'll touch on this Lori, if you don't mind. Alright, so what Lori's trying to say is the way that we're working with the EDA right now is right alongside the frontage, right next to the beach, right across from the beach, there's that, there's frontage right there. They're gonna keep that commercial property for any small retail stores. We'll just say theoretically speaking, they wanna put up twelve by twenty buildings, four of them. And then retailers can go in there and sell coffee, knickknacks, jewelry, et cetera. And then hopefully the CS Nelson Properties would build behind that and then that's where all of the townhomes would go. The, the garages are attached to the townhomes, so in reference, no, that's not where the garages are gonna go. That's just commercial possibility space. The way that we've talked about it, nothing's in paper, but it's going to be something along the lines of, we agreed to sell CS Nelson Properties this parcel of property and within three years, if nothing comes through where there's no commercial needed space up front, then, then we would go on with, we'll just speak to phase four, right Lori? Okay. Uh, first three is gonna be in that August time range. You know, if any we can keep to the schedule and I can get my guys in the ground in, you know, that middle of May timeline. Everything is pretty much timed out for everything to work pretty well for an August, mid-August move-in date. Nope. Okay, so when I speak of a one, two or three, a one twin home is a two bedroom, one bathroom, three bedroom, two bathroom, they're attached, which means it's got a twin home. Does that make sense? Okay.
So you'd have, you'd have three of each then in the first phase?
Correct. Right, so, yes, yes, actually the low income qualification offers no money. They don't, they don't pay you to live there, it's just to make sure that, that I offer it to somebody that does qualify for, that can't afford market rate rent. That's what the offering is. Would you have a second part of that question? Makes two of us. Yeah, it was, it was about rent rates. I'm shooting from the hip, my rent rates are anywhere from nine hundred to eleven hundred dollars in my other towns. I would venture to say that in Starbuck, that I'm gonna be in that thousand to a thousand fifty range. Now, when I say that, I pay for heat, sewer, water, lawn and snow. So therefore you pay for rent and then your common utilities such as your electric, which it's not electric heat, mind you. You can figure that on all of my buildings, I've done this long enough, where it's rent plus a hundred and seventy-five dollars a month escrowed out, so. That's, that's kind of where I'm at. And I think that's really comparable to the adjacent property at Bay Meadows.
I think there's a question back there.
I guess I don't understand the question. I can kind of speak to that, I guess. So with the way it is now with Governor Walz's COVID, whatever, I pay it. Luckily, I, the, the buildings that I put up and the screenings that I do, I've only had one out of eighty-one tenants that can't afford to pay, that has not paid. And then we're just kind of working all of those things out and they will end up paying. Like I said, the clientele that I bring in normally it's, you know, there is working families and they're certainly welcome to come. The one level living that I offer does bring a lot of the fifties, the sixty year olds to come in. Now theoretically speaking to what you asked, if, if, we'll just say you wanted to move in and you can't afford a thousand fifty months rent, you have the ability to go to your local service, like, who would, that would be Glenwood, social, I don't wanna say social services, but, yeah, family services of some sort and say, hey, I, I wanna live here, I can't afford it, there's no other housing options in this local area, which there is not. What can we do to make this work? And then they'll, they'll lay your finances out, they'll lay what rents out and if they have the ability to offer help, they will, and if they don't, they'll just let you know that. I guess a, as the owner, I have the ability to, on my credit applications, it says, it asks you what you make and a bunch of different things and questionnaires about if you've been evicted, if you, there's a bunch of things on there that I can't recite at this particular moment, but I, what's that? Uh, committed to crime is not an end-all be-all for me, a sexual crime? Yes, absolutely, I agree. But a DUI is a crime, speeding ticket is a crime. Sexual crimes, absolutely not, that's flat no. Any domestic disturbances, it's a no, but petty thefts? Nope, that's not a, that's not that kind of crime. Absolutely, and as, as a landlord, I don't want that either. No, I, I do have some apartments that, you know, are a little lower scale rent rates and I struggle with some of those things and it's just about weeding those people out. And as much as a person wants to do their best to weed them out, you might get a bad egg and you just gotta work through that, you get them out and that's just the way it is. I've been pretty lucky so far with the platform that I've ran and the background checks that I do. Typically, I'll ask the law enforcement of a town, you know, I'll give them the names, social security numbers, which are on the application and I say, can we do some background checks and make sure that these are the people that I want in my units? I think you had another question? So I, I, I know where the area you're talking about, you're talking about the northwest corner, kind of where you have that camper set and it's, it's high because you can see that there's a water problem there. How, oh, mind you, this is not my expertise, that's why I brought my excavator in. How he suggested that we deal with this is Craig Cheetah, Cheetah Excavating out of SOX Center, Melrose area. He does all my excavating for me. He's, he suggested that after all of these talks go through and this looking positive, that I would actually talk to you directly and talk about doing a possible culvert underneath of that easement road that you have right now to go back more to that wetland and/or we take portions of your allotted water, my allotted water, and I bore underneath of the road and displace it to the south where all of Bay Meadows water goes. I have three and a half inches of grade from the state highway there all the way back to your easement road that you have next to Airport Road. So it is something that we've addressed and it's a concern because I'm not interested in flooding, you know, your corner out. When you, when you did your delineation, did it delineate only your quadrant or did it delineate the entire quadrant? I know in most delineation processes, there is a square block of delineation and then if you got yours delineated to inhabitable, as we wanna call it, it would have delineated that entire capacity of that area. Okay.
So the other is still active.
Okay. Sure.
And then, uh, and then I was gonna ask is, what's your plan for a sound kind of buffer between the initial recreation park and housing?
Yep.
Cause when I had looked at this bus, about the hours, but, uh, evergreen trees of at least a twenty-foot spacing, uh, to sound create with the Bay Meadows.
Yep, so-
With large, full grown evergreens brought in immediately.
Sure.
And for a sound, I was just seeing that more idea. Cause I don't think a six-inch fence width is enough to stop bonfires down with more noise components than still the bonfire.
Yeah. Yep, you're absolutely right, um, so you touched on what, uh, what my plan is, is a six-foot-high, white or black, uh, complete composite fence all the way from Airport Road all the way out as the phases have worked or will work through, um, and I'm only speaking to my experience, not to a definition of it. However, I've done evergreen trees, I've done fences, um, the fence seems to work pretty well. It does two things, it stops any traffic from entering and exiting the area and the PDI, which is the property essentially, rather than, you know, if I do were to do evergreen trees, even at the largest capacity to move evergreen trees in, people can still enter and exit. So, I really like the idea personally for what I've experienced for, you know, a six-foot fence. It offers some noise control, it offers, uh, a nice aesthetic and protection from what I've experienced.
Are you letting your tenants, possible tenants know that their next door campground so we don't get multiple police calls like we did last year?
I would certainly think that, I mean, I know that I have some tenants in here already that, um, I would make it a very, very strong point that when they move in, I always show them the property and I would say, theoretically speaking, on Fourth of July, you have to expect something. On Memorial, on Labor Day, you know, nobody's looking to put anybody out, I'll be honest. So, if that became an issue, I would have a conversation with my tenants and say, listen, I, I understand and respect that you guys live here, we, but we do have to work together. You know, there's just, there's no way around that, so, um, and I know that you guys have an established business there and nobody wants noise complaints and nobody wants the cops called, so I would do everything in my power to make sure that did not happen.
How close are the foundations gonna be from the fence?
Tentatively, I'm gonna try to put the fence on the property line, um, which is in all respects the, you know, what I can do, you know, for the ordinance and such. I'm gonna say anywhere from fifteen to eighteen feet.
Still their backyards, they're gonna have fifteen, eighteen feet of trees?
No, no, it would be their side, it would be their side, so their backyards are actually looking at each other. So it's really, realistically, it would be a sidewalk. Enter their house and their backyard will face the other backyard, which are approximately thirty-four to thirty-seven feet apart. Which I've done. For, in what, you mean the backyards? Yeah, I, uh, I have backyards that are thirty-six feet apart in Long Prairie. I have adjacent corner properties in New London the same way. They seem to function very well and I've yet to get a complaint about aesthetically the way they look and usability.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Could I ask somebody from the council to explain gift financing?
I don't know, maybe, uh, I don't know, Lori, can you answer that better? It's tax increment financing, the county would, the county would administer the program and so forth and it, it just, uh, provides some financing for the company to recover some of the cost of the land, so.
I think everybody on their own should use their tip financing on that, because it's a lot more complicated than that. I just asked everybody up there if anybody could explain it. I mean, you're, you're giving us an example, but it doesn't really explain just why. You look into it a little bit. I can describe it if you'd like, or if you want people to look on their own, that's fine, I can.
I'd like you to describe it.
Okay.
Sure.
Sure. So, tax increment financing, it is a, um, so right now, I'm gonna start from the base platform. Right now, the property holds a taxable value of right around two thousand dollars a year. That never goes away, actually will be increased slightly, um, due to a dedicated use for the property. So, um, in my past history, theoretically speaking, the tax base on that parcel of property should go right to about twenty-four hundred dollars a year. That will always get dispersed out just like it is right now as being a non-use property. After my projects are complete, the tax base from the elevated tax base use will go, um, back to the EDA and HRA, or the EDA rather, for the ability to, rather than charge a developer or anybody else the full value of the property, it'll go back to the EDA for, uh, for that use. Now, they have about a seven-year recovery process on that. And then after, after that, tentatively, the city has the ability to take over that district and use those funds for rehabilitation of, of the city of Starbucks or another different developer to come in and so on and so forth. That's really the basis of tax increment financing. The school gets their portion, um, law enforcement gets their portion. It's, it's just that elevated tax base that I will inflate by inputting about just short of three million dollars onto that PID, um, that is not collected for approximately per stages, but approximately seven years per stage. And then hopefully, the city would then would take over, um, the ability to use those funds to, I'll say beautify the city of Starbucks or however they choose fit. That's the basis of tax increment financing. Now, I'm sure there's probably seventeen pages that, that you all should read, you know, it's important. But in the, you know, years of me using tax increment financing, that's the way it works.
And we had to ask, wherever we do a project that we needed to increment, we go to the city or the school, we ask for permission and then that's what we're here for. It's to ask that you will do the same. It's to help our developer in the first stages of the project.
But it does, I think, raise some upfront costs.
Right. Yeah. But the taxes that are, are at now continue to be paid.
Right. On, now, this is my experience, I'm not speaking to definition, but on my experience, uh, the way that this, this TIF and the way that how high my taxes will be in Starbucks for the, you know, the value of the property slash lake and such, I would foresee about a seven to seven-point-two-five year rate, so about seven years, seven and a half years until that, you know, per phase. I wanna be very clear with that, that on this first phase, I come through with three buildings, that seven-year starts. And then phase two, theoretically speaking, next year, then that phase starts because it's a fulfillment of each phase's buildings. I would hope that three, six, nine, twelve, I would hope that I would have four phases complete in, within four years unless they were to... Well, I already know the need for housing is great, so I could build all twelve now. I don't have the lumber to do that right now, um, but we just, we just kinda work as, like, okay, we think you need to go back to Starbucks. So, um, on the long side, four years, three and a half years, on the short side, two and a half years. Again, that's off my cuff, but that's what I would responsibly say. Correct. Correct. Yeah, I mean, it's, uh, typically is a good thing for, for a small town. There's not a lot of developers that wanna come into a small town just because you get, you, they wanna come in with, uh, a sixteen or a forty you apart, or forty, uh, unit apartment and they just, they can't swing it in small towns. So, my platform that we've been working with, uh, works really well. It just is in need of some increment for a short time, so. Yes.
I was just wondering if you could touch on that traffic flow out there? Now, if you're gonna build those retail buildings up there?
I-
I think we touched on that a little bit.
Right.
The planning is going in there.
Yep.
If you're gonna have parking available for that, is enough room?
Sure, um-
Traffic flow on and off.
Yep, I just want to make something very clear, I am not a commercial guy. So, I will not be building the commercial stuff, but in respect to the question, I'm going to have, uh, roads or driveways essentially, um, that enter off of Airport Road going towards the RV park or heading north that are gonna be fourteen, fifteen feet wide. And then I have, um, wide enough for two vehicles on their, um, on their own personal driveway and they have a two-stall attached garage. Um, so, in respects to parking, even on the three bedrooms, um, in my contracts, I state that they really should not have, geez. They should not have any more than three vehicles, um, so two inside, one outside. If they did have more than that, then, um, they would be parking on the, the tar roads that I would put in when people could still get by for, you know, uh, emergency vehicles and such like that. So there would not be traffic jams to a degree, um, so, does that answer your question?
Yeah, does golf course, uh, carts, is that considered a third vehicle or?
I've never been asked that question, um, I don't know, thanks a lot. Excuse me. I would say a golf cart is not a third vehicle, but I can't imagine somebody's gonna have more than a golf cart or maybe two, but, um, I can't, I can't answer that. Is there any other questions out there for me? Yes.
How, how is it that you're able to build a less than five acres?
I'm not reading the city regulations, are you referencing a, uh, planned development, R2 development? Cause these are single-family housing development. Again, I'm not sure what you're referencing.
So do you divide each one of those parts into parcels? Is that what you're gonna do?
What I would do, right now, it's a, it's one PID, so what I would do after, well, I would, I would ask the EDA what they would like me to do before I just would go do it. However, I have the ability to do a single-family housing unit on one PID, which does not, uh, require a planned development, you know, engineered platform, even though I will listen to the city's engineer on how they wanna see the infrastructure and how and where they want it to go. I could build two twin homes and parcel it off on its own PID and then do the next two twin homes, um, and do the PID just like somebody would do on a house if they wanted to separate other land off. Again, I would, I would reach out to the EDA and ask what they would like to see. Does that answer your question? Okay.
I have a question about the north side of all of the housing, there's no road there, so all of the roads just go to the end and stop?
Yes, I will have a, I don't wanna say a turnaround or a cul-de-sac of some sort, but there will be, there will be a dead end there where then people can drive. It'll probably go past the last driveway, so then when people back up, they can back in there and then come out.
I'd work on the ambulance, so that's why I'm looking at this thinking about-
Sure.
-when we end up going in and you've, your road is twelve?
I have twelve on there, but I got vetoed and my excavator said not a chance, we're gonna go with fourteen or sixteen.
Okay, cause it's good, I'm just thinking for us, it would have to be wider.
Yep.
Um, especially if there's any vehicles parked.
That's what he said too.
Trying to back in and out and then not having-
Yep.
-that escape route basically-
Yeah.
-on the north side, so that's kind of a concern-
Sure.
-that I can see.
Yep, and that's a, that's a, that's a concern that needs to be addressed for sure, so, um, the plan is-
We're in ambulance, there's fire trucks too, you know, so-
Yep.
-there's all that emergency. So there'll be some way to-
Yes, there will be, so you can-
-strangle out.
Yes, there will be, uh, pass the driveway per se so that you can enter, back up, or you can go in here and back up, or just go straight in, stop, help, and then out you go.
So is the each ring gonna sell you off a parcels as you go or are you buying the whole piece?
As of right now, what's been discussed is that, um, the PID that it stands right now, the property identification number, will go to CS Nelson Properties if this all comes through.
So you'll buy each parcel number as you go?
There's one parcel number right now.
Oh, for the whole thing?
Right.
Oh, and then you would sell off?
I would not sell. Oh, yes, if, if, uh, again, I don't know how the contract would, would be written up, but it would be something along the lines of, within three years, if, if, if they say, um, we have some commercial, um, interest, then I would say, okay, well, that's, you know, it's part of the memo note contract that they get that back, you know, the front, however many acres it was, and then the commercial would go on there.
So how much, I mean, is it public knowledge, like how much, you're purchasing this land for or is it part of the tax?
Um-
Paying it back to taxes or?
It actually hasn't even been really talked about yet, but yes, it is public knowledge, um, but it will be kind of all incorporated with that tax increment financing.
Are there any more questions or, or? Okay.
So what's the process from here then, go, from this meeting to go forward, what's your plan, say your experience plans? Meetings wise, how, you need to, before you can start?
I wanna touch on that deline, that delineation scenario, um, first and foremost, which I will be doing tomorrow. But then, I think Lori has a detailed schedule of what we're looking at for a timeline.
Yeah, we, um, we're, we're asking the city to have a public hearing for resolutions set for the, uh, today. We're asking them to see if they would do this and then, uh, the, the public meeting resolution, we don't make that. And if everything falls into place, he would start going to make, so they could be ready to move.
Is there any way there could be a completely land layout engineered plan before we can move forward with any public hearings or? An engineered, uh, layouts, an official final design for, with all the phases listed in there?
I think, uh, Mayor, um, touched on this when we had our plan in the zoning meeting and he had asked me to, uh, present the plan in the zoning next time we had a meeting, which I'd be-
What engineer company would you be working with?
I would use Design Tree.
Out of Allen?
Mm-hmm. Now, when you say, and, yeah, I use, uh, his name is Jeremy there, um, beside the point, but when you, uh, when you speak to an engineer design, um, I'm not sure, can you define what that means?
Well, I'm talking to engineer that, uh, first- Well, I'm talking to engineer that first thing they do as you walk in the door, they already have read all the city ordinance is know exactly all the city utilities and that's mapped on your whole sheet before you already.
Yeah, that um.
And then then they then they have your phases engineered to the land in all of these. And then and then that explains the uh green space, like the fifty percent green space rule. If you're acquiring the whole piece of crap, I mean within a thousand feet, you're only allowed fifty percent green space. So if you end up burning up all the green, the fifty percent of that three acres in the back half, when it comes down to commercial, there's gonna be no green space left.
Right, so the green space.
Have you looked at the green space at all now?
I have, yep.
What what would you be at percentage wise with your faces?
I would be less than fifty percent.
Including the commercial area up front?
Well, the commercial area up front is just part of the phase four project. So it's nothing to do with me burning up the first and the first three and leaving the last phase and just kinda guessing at it. Um.
Cause that would leave the last phase high and dry for that one parcel number of fifty percent green space.
Right, which is not the case. Um and when you speak of uh an engineered with um as built and all that other stuff, I would uh I would say that if I know where the infrastructure is, I think I met, you know, you out there already, we know where the sewer and water is and the stick in with a six-inch straight stick for hydrant, you know, so on and so forth, which we have to touch on. But I would uh I would ask Design Tree to give me a cornered property marks, a topple print of where all the buildings are gonna be at, driveways, and ultimately, I'm not sure what else anybody would.
All I would ask is if they were um if you can hire Design Tree, make sure that they've read every city ordinance and you're completely in respect. So then what happens is you send it out to the city, comes for cities, engineers, then that time it's wasted. Uh if they don't do the background knowledge for it.
Sure. So realistically, it's side setbacks, front yard, interior, and green space.
What about the tiers? Do you have everything? Do you have all the tiers marked at all or?
Uh you're talking the phases?
Yeah, tiers. Tiers actually from the lake shore. There's 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 certain rules for the tiers. I'm not the engineer, that's why I hired this engineer.
Sure.
Uh each tier is only allowed so many square footage within that tier, so.
Yep. Um if you look at the adjacent property Bay Meadows, I will use way less green space than they have. Um which is too, obviously, to the south. Um so I guess the green space and the tiered scenario is the is really far from a concern of mine. Um I guess it was just the tax increment, you know, financing that was something that I was trying to, you know, addressing and then questions like this. Um but I my plan.
The only thing is because I had a four multiple letters of interest to do things with that property. Did it include that a front beachside plaza of three commercial buildings with the the multiple things uh uh I don't really wanna exist cause I don't wanna give my ideas away.
Sure.
Um it'd be a commercial property in that front whole front.
Mm-hmm.
Um and I'm just considering it one hundred percent of that parcel number goes to you, which is really is what it is.
Mm-hmm.
I just don't wanna see the green space being burnt up in all in the back fifty percent. And then when it comes to phase four of a potential commercial building up front, that green space is first off and then and then.
Yeah, let me uh let me.
Just uh.
It's a concern of yours and I understand that.
That equals a concern to the community.
Absolutely, and it should be. Um but in respect to that, we'll just theoretically say that there's a commercial property that um has interest. And I give the property back. It's gonna offer its own PID number and um in my phases, I will assure and I will have it documented that I would not burn up green space of commercial that I have to give back on that PID to the EDA or whom they chose that I sell it to for, you know, use for green space usage.
One more question.
Yeah.
So uh are you willing to utilize anybody local for plumbing, heating, ex- I mean any anything, I mean so I'm just looking at our community guys, are you willing to step out of your kind of thing you do and and utilize some locally?
For scheduling purposes, I'm not certain. I'm not certain that it would even be a functionality. Um just on the account of every contractor I talk to is booked for the summer. Every excavator, every plumber, they're booked. And my timelines and my windows are like four days. Four days, this has gotta be done. Next four days, it's a really revolving door of four days. When when it's done, we'll say theoretically say when this project's done and I tentatively right now, I do all my lawn care, but theoretically speaking, if I can find uh.
I'm just looking at the infrastructure.
Yep.
Setting the personal shingles. Are you gonna be able to call somebody and see if you can utilize somebody locally?
Right, my contractor shingles, but but I understand what you're saying.
Any any.
Right, so like a landscaper for for say, I got somebody's business card in Starbucks Casey's uh two weeks ago because I was like, hey, look, you know, local guy um landscaping something that can be done at at the end of the project or a hydro seed scenario or um you know, if I can't get time to final set grade or something like that. But when it comes to, you know, the nuts and bolts of the project, it's about next to impossible to switch up what I have for revolving door.
Okay, um I think we gotta move uh move on here. Um so unless there's any other questions, I I uh thank Lori and Cody and and Cody and uh the uh next item on the agenda uh is uh Woodseth, Larry Van Houtt and uh Nick Kuz to discuss the multi-use trail and the twenty twenty road project, so.
Hi, I am uh Nick Kuz with Woodseth. Uh I'm gonna provide an update on the trunk highway twenty-nine multi-use trail. Larry will provide the update on the twenty twenty project. So the the twenty twenty trail project is from a trail from the south uh Starbucks Beach entrance to the Waters Edge entrance approximately. Uh it's to provide access for the people on the west side of trunk highway twenty-nine to to get across the highway to the beach and also to um cross to use the trail to go uptown. Last Friday, we received quotes on the project. And uh I'll summarize those now. Um we had three quotes for an asphalt trail. Um Ferguson Brothers with sixty thousand dollars and thirty thirty-three, sixty thousand thirty-three dollars and ninety cents. Central Specialties uh eighty-eight thousand two hundred and eighty-nine dollars and eighty cents. And Mark Lee Excavating seventy-two thousand one hundred and eighty-seven dollars and zero cents. Um and then we got one quote for concrete trail at one oh five, six eleven and zero cents. Uh so I'd, you know, ask that the council uh review the quotes and and decide how they wanna move forward. Any questions?
Yeah, I think the uh.
Standby, I'm gonna look that up in the plant just to, don't wanna, don't wanna, don't want to give you the wrong answer. Uh so for the bituminous trail, it would be um two inches of uh bituminous pavement and eight inches of aggregate base class five. So a little thinner bituminous section, but a much thicker aggregate base course. Yeah, that would be pretty great, normal for a trail like this. Usually it's not going to see a lot of heavy car traffic, but we have it heavy enough so that if you need to drive maintenance vehicles on there, you can get um trucks and stuff on it from time to time. Yep.
Okay, I yeah, I think they said he'll take that under advisement and uh and communicate with you when uh when a decision is made, so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, um just wanted to give you an update on the the MinDOT project. Uh we submitted a pay request, well, MinDOT sent me a pay request number ten. Uh not much water and sewer on it, but we did do a pay request, sent that to Joan for signature, so we'll get get that into PFA for reimbursement. We still have some change orders, uh we're waiting to get approved. I still haven't got them back from the contractor yet. I'll ask me that about that again on Wednesday. Uh again, that's been approved by council months and months ago. We just need to sign one to get to Department Health to approve it. And then we'll get reimbursement or submit that for reimbursement. Uh last week, MinDOT met with Central Specialties, just trying to go through quantities and extra work items. I'll keep you posted on that if there's anything for the city on that. Uh we're scheduled for a walkthrough with MinDOT this Wednesday at nine thirty, just to know, walk the project just to see if anything comes up, you know, the sidewalk that's buckled or chipped or whatever. Um so we're just gonna kinda go through some punch list items the city has. Uh if you're aware of anything or you have concern about something, let us know that. We'll certainly talk to MinDOT about that. Yes, Steve? Yeah. Okay. 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 I know we talked about last fall when we did that walkthrough too. We had some bricks moving, some pavers are moving around a little bit then. They maybe need to be reset, so I'll bring that up, Steve. So so yeah, we'll do that walkthrough. But yeah, if something else comes up, you anybody know something you got a question about, you know, um we'll talk to MinDOT about it. Like one's a sign at the intersection, the highway intersection's not right, so, street sign. So I don't know, that's kinda the purpose, just to to go through that. Assuming we don't have three inches of stone.
Are we gonna meet here at the city hall?
We can. Well, no, actually, I think Troy was gonna meet us just out at the intersection, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, Gary.
Okay, okay.
So um so that's where we're at with MinDOT. Uh J and J's working on the punch list. They're uh gonna be working on cleaning out manholes. Uh there's some concrete and debris that was in there from last year, so they're supposed to be working on it today on Wednesday. Uh as far as MinDOT Petrofund reimbursement, I guess we're still gonna try to get some reimbursement for the groundwater treatment. But we haven't got the MinDOT report back yet, so we're calling them on that. See if we can get that. Uh First Street, we had that project, I'm doing a draft final pay request I sent to Riley. If everything checks out, I'll start working with staff by Joan and Gary and Randy. We'll go through the assessments and see what those look like, then come back with a review of those with council, then possibly call call an assessment hearing sometime. So just to go through that process. Uh we had a comp plan on the twenty-third. We had a meeting on that, had a good turnout. I think there was about thirty or thirty plus, I think, if I counted right. So again, that was a good kickoff, working on that plan, and the thought is try to have another meeting here maybe towards the end of the month or early next month to keep that process rolling. So we'll be talking, Gary, maybe tentatively try to shoot for some time towards the end of the month to have that next meeting. So that'd be the plan. And then the last thing was just that we did a little update on the zoning map. I guess I got that to Gary and Joan to take a look at and the the committee too, won't finding zoning to take a look at. If there's any changes, we can make those. So that's kinda my update. Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Larry. Uh we'll move on to the personnel reports and I just wanted to make an announcement that uh the city council had a special council meeting on March twenty-sixth to review the Marina Access Lease Agreement uh for the new Marina. And uh several uh suggestions were uh looked at to uh amend the uh agreement as it was drafted. Uh those changes were made and the council met again on uh April first at a special meeting and approved the Marina Access Lease Agreement. Uh it's now been put out for uh proposals and uh the proposals are due uh by April sixteenth, which would be next Friday. So uh well, actually, this Friday, or or is that Saturday? Friday, I guess, yeah. So the proposals are due this Friday and uh and the council would uh uh look at those proposals and uh move on from there, so. The proposals have to be substantially in line with the Marina Lease uh Access Lease Agreement, so. And uh that has been published in the paper uh for the last two weeks and so forth. So we're looking looking forward to getting uh proposals uh by this Friday. Other than that, uh there's just one other announcement I wanted to make is that last council meeting, uh we tabled an item on the four H uh the uh four H club, local four H club wanted to meet in the community center on Sundays once a month and uh we had a little discussion and uh decided to offer them the to use the use of the airport uh AD building and uh they were very happy with that and uh sent us a nice note and uh offered to lend their help to any local projects we might have or whatever and uh so that issue has uh been decided on and uh so I just wanted to let everybody know that. So we'll move on in the agenda. The next item on the agenda is uh a police report from Chief Johnson.
Okay, um basically for the month of March, um we had a hundred and eighty-one calls for service. Uh I've been staying busy. Uh we've got a couple suspicious things going on. We had some vandalism, I guess, somebody's putting sugar in gas tanks. Um I don't know what the point of that is, but um some people up on West Ninth Street have had that issue. It's like the second report we've had with that going on up there. Um couple, uh we had a altercation that occurred at the VFW, well, some crim damage to property. That incident was taken care of. Um one was arrested on the on a warrant arrest, filing probation. Another drug investigation kinda stemmed off a traffic stop. We cut a couple of that stuff going on. And then we did uh end up arresting a a sex offender that failed to register uh last month, so in his area, so. Other than that, police calls, I don't know if you guys have any calls just regarding calls for service, if I can answer those or. Good to go there? Okay. Um so with that, so we are on a kind of a part-time officer shortage. We uh had a, we're down to, we had what, four, five, and we're down to three. Um one is probably gonna eventually probably resign too, if we wanna hear. Um so we'll be down to two, and those two that we have are full-time officers in other jurisdictions, so their availability is pretty s- pretty limited. Um with that, uh we had the announced uh resignation of Officer Erin Gunther. She is done on May sixth. Um so that was not known to be happening. I just, that kinda happened last week abruptly. So um with that, we'll have to, like I said in our calls meeting, kinda discuss some of those issues. Um so and another issue that we will be very short-staffed in May. We have Officer Ryan Franks who's in the Army Reserve. He's leaving for reserve training uh for the whole month. So that limits us down to myself and um Officer Amber Wazalowski. So it's another thing that we can discuss on that, but just so you're aware that that's kinda where we're sitting right now, so so.
Basically, we have no part-time.
Right now, we basically don't have any part-time help, so we're pretty stretched.
Right now, we basically don't have any part-time help, so, uh, we're pretty stretched. Um, and then especially with the month of May coming up and we're down to two, so it's gonna be, uh, interesting, so. But we'll make it work. We've done it before, so we can, we can make it work. So, I'm not too worried about it.
I'd just remind everybody that Ryan is the school resource officer and, um, a lot of our calls come from the, uh, the, uh, Wake Academy or the, so.
So we'll be, um, we'll be cut, we'll be making the hours, we'll, I mean, the hours will be covered, it's just the fact that we're gonna, Amber and I are gonna be a little busy for the month of May. But, so with that though, there is a resignation letter for Erin Gunther. I would want you, I guess, a motion to accept that resignation letter?
I'd make a motion that we accept, uh, Officer Erin Gunther's, uh, letter of resignation.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by, uh, Councilman Gorder to accept the resignation of, uh, Erin Gunther. And seconded by, uh, Councilman Tafe. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
And with that, then also just to let, I'm sure you've seen, we put, did post the hire, um, trying to get it on the head of the eight ball here with Erin resigning. And then also to try and maybe get some part-timers out of that, see if we can work something, uh, maybe one or two out of that. Just depends, it's tough to do with law enforcement as, it's situations that are going on in our world today and what's going on in Minneapolis. It's, uh, tough to find officers, so, um, most of us, we've, back in the day, we used to get, you know, fifty, sixty apps. Glenwood's going through the whole hiring process and they're, they've got five apps, so. It's, it's tough, so. And, uh, just with that, it's, it's just to let the public know that, you know, if you're getting, a lot of the officers in, in the air and everybody, you know, everybody's kind of on edge. There's a lot of stuff going on, a lot of threats going on. So just be cautious, you know, when you're getting pulled over by a police officer, just listen to what they're saying. Be respectful. We're not, we're gonna treat you right, we're not gonna treat you wrong, but if you do something hinky and stuff, things can go wrong south. And as you can see in the, as the call down in Brooklyn Park, things can happen very quickly and things can go bad. So it's just, uh, heads up for everybody else, you know, we, uh, we do our best and we treat everybody the, as mu- as much as we can with respect and it's a tough world right now, so we'll go from there. But other than that, that's all I got, so.
Thank you, Mitch. Randy, do you have anything for the streets and, uh, water sewer?
All right, we got our new dock frames all assembled. We're just waiting for floats and then we can get the concrete on, then they'll be ready to put in. Uh, the street sweepers are in town, so you've probably seen them around sweeping streets, so that's getting done. Uh, we'll be starting hydrant flushing here this week and probably next week. So if people see there's a wet spot on the road, just be aware if you have low water pressure, colored water, it's from the hydrant flushing. Uh, there, we have, we got most of the Marina in, uh, the campground side is left. We have to pull some of them old docks out to put the new ones in. So those are the ones that aren't currently in, but there has been some vandalism and damage down there. Just to remind people, if, if you see something funny, don't be afraid to call the police and report it. If you see some kids throwing stuff in the water or something like that, so. All right, that's all I have.
So they, they pulled out like eight posts out of the Marina?
Yeah, and they're having.
By the north, uh, launch?
Some pins that we've noticed have just randomly along have been missing this year and, uh, you know, they just get bored and look for something that's loose that they can pull out and throw in the lake, so. Um, I guess as soon as we can get the floats and get the concrete in. Okay, good. All right, thanks.
Okay, thank you, Randy. Did you have anything, Joan, or nothing? Okay. Yeah, Tom.
I've got one question that actually pertains to Mitch here. And I was just wondering what percentage of the public has, uh, permit to carry? Is there any figures on that or?
I'd have to look at that. I'm guessing it's probably less than fifty. Guess, I guess, but I, I would, just like I remember that scene.
It's starting to get to be more of an issue, I think.
Okay, um, I don't know, Randy, uh, did you have anything for the fire department? Okay. Airport, uh, is anything, Ted?
Yeah, I would like to make an announcement. We're trying to get enough help to do the pancake feet. Pancake feet that are airproof case. Now that more agents are using that, I might just approach them and ask them if they would be interested in helping a little bit. We're getting too many, too many people in our club and it's just getting harder and harder to deal with. Just something.
Okay. I think, Joan, did you find that contact or? Joan has contact, so. Okay. Other than that, we can move on to all business and, uh, the, uh, Starry Stonewort Treatment. Uh, the council decided to have AIS Consulting do the pre and post-monitoring. Uh, they're gonna do, uh, pre-monitoring in early June sometime. And then we're gonna schedule, uh, uh, the hand-pulling of Starry Stonewort in the Marina. And then they'll do the post-monitoring and depending on the results, there may be some chemical treatments in the Marina, so we will, if we do that, we'll have to notify, uh, uh, slip owners or renters that, uh, there will be some chemical treatments, uh, but that's not, uh, uh, definitive yet that we will, so. Uh, we're, we're working with AIS Consulting and, uh, uh, the hand-pullers are, are what, uh, Water, Waterfront, uh, I think, uh, that did the hand-pulling last year. And then Clark and, uh, uh, Engineering is, uh, uh, would do the chemical treatments and all of this is permitted by the DNR and, uh, so there'll be a separate permit for the hand-pulling and a separate permit for any chemical treatments that are necessary after, after the monitoring's done. So, um, other than that, uh, I guess we can move on to new business. Uh, we have a request from Casey's for a liquor license to sell three-two beer. I think that's something that Pilot had before Casey's, uh, had the station. And, uh, it is within our allotted, uh, permits for off-sale. Well, yeah, I think we only have two off-sale and we're permitted four, so. I would, uh, I don't know if the council has any questions on, on that request or. If, if not, I'd like, uh, entertain a motion to approve, uh, a off-sale liquor license for three-two beer for Casey's.
I'll make a motion that we, um, uh, approve the three-two off-sale beer license for Casey's.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Gorder to approve an off-sale, uh, three-two beer license for Casey's. And, uh, seconded by Councilwoman Hanson. Uh, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Next on the agenda is to Resolution twenty-two-one dash zero-four, uh, which is a, uh, has to do with a landscaping agreement with MINDOT for through highways twenty-eight, twenty-nine and one fourteen. Because the trees would be planted in MINDOT right away, we, uh, need to coordinate with them and get a permit. And, uh, also, uh, uh, there's a, a grant or money available from MINDOT to do that landscaping, so. But we have to go through the procedures and, uh, and work with MINDOT to do that. So this is the first step and, uh, in getting that permit to, and buying the landscaping materials and planting them, so. Is there any questions on, uh, that agenda item? If not, I'll entertain a motion to, to approve Resolution twenty-two-one dash zero-four, which is landscaping agreement with MINDOT.
I'll make the motion to approve Resolution twenty-two-one dash zero-four.
And I'll second.
Okay. So I have a motion by Councilman Tafe to approve, uh, Resolution twenty-two-one dash zero-four landscaping agreement with MINDOT. For the, uh, the complete streets project, seconded by Councilman Tafe and, uh. I'm sorry. Motion by Councilman Gorder, seconded by, uh, no, other way. Okay. Motion by Councilman Tafe, seconded by Councilman Gorder. And is there any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Uh, next item on the agenda is a resolution, uh, that was provided by HRA, EDA in Pope County. Resolution twenty-two-one dash zero-five, calling for a public hearing to establish the Tiff District for. Is there any further questions or discussion on that? Otherwise, I'd entertain a motion to, to, uh, set up a public hearing, uh, at the next council meeting to entertain that.
I'll make the motion to approve, uh, Resolution twenty-two-one dash zero-five.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Tafe to approve Resolution twenty-two-one dash zero-five, calling for the public hearing to establish the Tiff District. Public hearing to be on May tenth, uh, seconded by Councilwoman Hanson. Uh, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Last item on the agenda is to extend the local emergency declaration for COVID-nineteen through the end of May, May thirty-first. I think I heard a couple of days ago that Pope County is the highest positive, positivity rate per ten thousand people in the state of Minnesota. So we're not over this yet, you know, and, uh, you know, the new variants from the UK and so forth are, are hitting our area. And, uh, so I feel it's only right that we, uh, continue to extend that local emergency and, uh, and, uh, keep our low, keep our, uh, city office, uh, closed for the time being, so. So I'll entertain a motion to extend the, uh, local emergency declaration to, through, uh, May thirty-first, twenty-twenty-one.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay. So, um, we have a motion by Councilman Gorder to extend the local emergency declaration for COVID-nineteen through May thirty-first, twenty-twenty-one. Seconded by Councilman Tafe. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. That concludes our regular agenda. We are going to adjourn to the conference room, the council is, for a, the closed meeting and, uh, it shouldn't take too long and we'll come back and resume the meeting and, uh, thank you.